It is eight thirty. Welcome to the Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, meeting of Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Saldemire.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
President.
All right, please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, give your correspondence or organizational business.
Oh, man.
Any public comment?
We have one.
All right. Public comment. Assistant desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Good morning. Good one up.
This, I don't know if this is commission thing. Anyways, I just came to personally give a good job and a thanks.
Wait, wait, first.
Oh, yeah, Sabrina, sorry, Sabrina Metter, thirty-four oh four, California Road.
Thank you.
Anyways, bringing a personal good job thanks to county, and David Lee's not here, so it's mostly for his department. But a couple of weekends ago, my husband was going down our road and noticed a big hole in the road, and I just wanted to say thank you for how quickly the sheriff got there. The culvert was undermined completely under the road. And so sheriff got there quick, and then I believe it was Jeff, who does like the bridge, and stuff was there quick. And then first thing Monday morning, they had it, everybody coming with the equipment and fixed it. So anyways, I just wanted to say thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, our consensus today consists of minutes from the meeting on July nineteenth. Special claim voucher in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents, and payroll in the amount of one million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand and one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Agreed.
Commissioner Saldemire.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Dickinson.
Yes. All right. Our first item of business, Paul Bean is going to come and give us an update of FCDC.
Morning.
Or as my husband calls it, ACDC, but I.
ACDC. Reminder, you're not in that case, but you have one there.
Awesome. Can I sleep? Because I heard you when you did the city, so I'm looking.
Yeah.
All right.
But this is a different presentation.
Oh, well, then I won't. Oh, wow.
Some of it's repetitive, yeah. Well, thank you for your time today. I feel like, and as Chair Dickinson mentioned, I gave a presentation in the City of Ottawa, and I felt like I needed to, I want to do the same for the county. You two are the largest contributors financially to FCDC. And since I came on board the end of 2019, I thought it's appropriate to kind of walk through what's happened and not happened in the timeframe since I've been the director, and wanted to kind of walk through that with you today and give you a chance to ask questions and challenge me on anything that you see that we should be doing that we're not doing. So in your packet, and at the top is the PowerPoint presentation. Just put it in print, because I think it's easier for all of us that way. Want to first go back and talk about how we're doing on our revenue collection. As I just indicated, Franklin County and the City of Ottawa are the two largest contributors from a revenue standpoint, which we're deeply appreciative of, that support that you're very gracious to give us. And then we also, from your municipality standpoint, receive support from Wellsville and Princeton. Outside of that is private individuals, private businesses, or our membership. And so that is our revenue source in most cases. And so you can see, with the exception of the year 2020, we've been around the two hundred and ten, the two hundred and thirty mark. Revenue was up a little bit in 2022. But the anomaly that I want to explain, in 2020, we had about $291,000 in revenue, and there were two big things that happened that year. When I came on board, it was quickly apparent to me we needed to upgrade our social media, our marketing, and those types of things. So, excuse me, we spent a significant amount of money on that, but we received, I sought funding from Everji, and we received $20,000 grant from Everji for that purpose. So that was an anomaly that we got. And then, of course, there was this thing called COVID going on, and CARES Act money came out, so I sought our share of the CARES Act money, and we received just $182,000 in CARES Act money. So there's $101,000, $102,000 that we don't normally see on our revenue trail. So that's why you see the anomaly there in 2020. Then when you look at, I think the next one is member revenue, or member revenue, this is the private, this is the private sector. When I came on board in 2019, our revenue at the end of that year from the private sector was just over $35,000. We've increased our membership without any increase in dues. We've increased our membership. So in 2022, we were just a little over, just under $51,000 in private membership. So forty-two percent increase in other revenues as we try to, instead of always coming here and asking for more money, the first objective is to raise it from the private sector, and we've had pretty good success there. This year, year-to-date, we're at fifty-one, four twenty-five, and we collect most of our revenue at the first quarter is when we get our private, and then we start to gain a few members throughout the year. But I anticipate we'll end the year pretty much where we're at, at fifty-one, four twenty-five. So we've got a nice increase in that. We've gone from about sixty-two members to, we're up to ninety-one members now. Expense-wise is the next slide. You can see in 2019, expenses were pretty low. That was the year there was no executive director on the payroll, so there wasn't, wasn't that expense. But obviously, there wasn't as much activity taking place from the organization as far as promoting industry in our region. In 2020, expenses went up. One, there was a director, but then the board at FCDC understood we had gotten far behind on our marketing materials, on our ability to get the word out about Proximity Park. And so we contracted on website. We contracted in the very back of your file. There is the brochure we built for Proximity Park that we use to this day. And we also did a housing study that year that the county and the city can use. Wellsville's used it, Ottawa's used it. That's a $9,000 ticket item. In fact, we just, we have to do those every two years, so we're in the process of doing one right now. And so things like that. We did a target analysis for Proximity Park that year. Again, that was research to find out what's the right fit for the park, what's the right fit for our community. And so really spent some time looking internally at what are we trying to do, what's a good fit, as well as building our branding and our marketing plan that year. So that's why you see a significant increase, and we did draw from those excess revenues that we got from, basically, the CARES Act helped fund a lot of that. Twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, you kind of see where we land on expenses in the two hundred and thirteen, the two hundred and twenty range, and hopefully, we can stay somewhat in that neighborhood. Inflation is having an impact on us, just like everybody else. So I anticipate the budget this year in 2023, we'll probably have some more monies that we pulled from reserve. Like I said, we're doing a housing study. We're supporting some software partnerships with Miami County and some other things that we're kind of test-driving. And so we spent a little bit trying, again, get our name and our reputation out there in the community. So when you look at the revenue and expenses, the next one kind of shows you how we're doing as far as contributing to our reserve account. Obviously, in 2019, we put a bunch of money, we put back in reserve over $90,000. And then again, in 2020, we spent a significant amount, kind of doing a reset, quite frankly. And so we're about $17,000 in expenses over revenue. Twenty twenty-one kind of was the entail of that, so we were about three thousand, about four thousand under. And then last year, we got back up to where we like to be, and that was a surplus of about sixteen, a little over $16,000. So as you can see over that four-year period, we're lot, we've added a lot more to reserve than we certainly have taken out of it. But the nice thing is that reserve's there, so when we need a housing study, or there's a special project that comes up that the board feels is important for us to participate in, that we have those capabilities to do that. Of course, a key area of interest for everybody is what's happening with Proximity Park. In this chart, the blue, the blue ones talk about the RFPs. So those are requests that come across my desk, and then the kind of the orange there is the ones that we respond to. And so why would I not respond to requests? Well, maybe the request says they need rail, or maybe they need more power than we can provide, or maybe they need more acreage than we can provide. Some of these larger projects that we hear about need a minimum of 500 acres, and certainly a lot more power and utility, those types of things that we can provide. So they're not the right fit. So in 2020, we had twenty RFPs and responded to eleven. In 2021, we had twenty-three RFPs and responded to seventeen. Twenty twenty-two, we had twenty-nine RFPs and responded to sixteen. And then so far this year, we've had twelve and have responded to five. So it's normally about a fifty percent hit rate as far as when we get an inquiry, is it something we can respond? And there's a few outliers. You know, if somebody wants to put in a pig farm, I'm not going to respond. But if it's something where it's kind of on the border, I'll reach out to the county administrator and the city manager and just say, is this something I should pursue or not? So it's not just me making that decision. I like to seek input from the city and the county when it seems like it's kind of a border issue there. So normally about fifty percent, but you can see we get a lot of activity. And so there's, I think, I think the point to this is there's a lot happening, even though you don't see an end result, which we all want. But the activity underneath the water line is pretty vibrant. It's kind of like the duck paddle. It looks pretty smooth.
Talk about this, but when you get Proximity Park, how long does it be to get, you're working on the certification or whatever it's called? How long before that's complete?
The certification?
Yes.
We suspect we'll have that submitted to the state in August. And then depending on how long it takes the state to process, but I'm sure by the end of the year, I'd be shocked if we don't have a certified site by the end of the year.
Do you think that will increase our number of?
Yeah. Yep, yep, sure do.
Awesome.
Yeah, Bartlett West has done a great job on that. And yeah, we did get a grant for four thousand to help pay for that, too, from the state. We were the first ones to get the, as soon as they announced it, I applied for it, and we were the first ones to get it. So I'm kind of proud of that.
When you get these RFPs for Proximity Park, and I know it's never the same, but roughly how long do you have to respond?
Well, great question. Three years ago, I got about five, six days, and now it's about twenty-four to forty-eight hours. So the timelines have really shortened. And so when you get that, that's something where everything else I'm doing goes to the side, and I just focus on that. And I get great support. Janet's helped me a million times with issues that come up, or questions that come up, I should say, and the folks, Melanie, especially down at City Hall in Ottawa, that's just been phenomenal. I couldn't do it without them, quite frankly. But yeah, the timelines have really, really gotten short, and that's true on through. They're, you know, they want to know how long is it going to take to get through the process? And then how long is it going to take to get up and running? Because they're, they're, once they pick something, they're wanting to rock and roll really fast. And so as a community, we've got to be pretty agile and ready to really rock and roll in that regard. So.
And to be clear, by respond, you don't mean respond saying, yes, we're interested. These folks want a comprehensive array of information that involves numerous folks throughout the community. It's never the same. There's no template you can use. It's, it's chaos for twenty-four or forty-eight hours.
Yeah, it's been interesting. You think after a while, you've gotten about every question anybody could ask, but everyone comes in with another nuance, and that's why I have great help from Janet, because there's always a tax issue nuance, and I'm like, I don't know. Janet knows it right away. And so, yeah, you're absolutely right. These are very, very comprehensive spreadsheets that they want, and it is, it gets pretty hectic for a couple of days. But like I said, I can't thank the folks that work with me and the way that they respond in such a timely manner, and could not do it without, without them. So yeah, it's, it's, it's a quick process, for sure. As you know, something we started just a little over a year ago is our membership with the Network Kansas E-Community, entrepreneurship community. And that has more of a focus on the downtown and commercial and retail, but I feel like it's important because we have to show that we're strong economically across the board when we're recruiting industry, and, and, you know, when they come to town, they want to drive down Main Street, so you don't want a bunch of empty buildings there. Plus, it just makes quality of life better if we have a healthy, vibrant local economy. So the E-Community program is really doing great things. We've done four loans, and all of these have been in Ottawa at this point. I do have an interested party in Wellsville now, so I'm excited about that. We actually have five different parties I'm talking to currently that aren't done. So we'll have a lot more coming through, I think, in the coming months. But the numbers behind this are pretty impressive. As I've said before with the E-Community, that's a gap loan, so we come behind the local bank. So if somebody comes to me and is interested in the E-Community entrepreneurship support, I'll visit with him about the program, and then I'll tell him, you need to go speak to a Franklin County bank of your choice, but I prefer that it be a Franklin County bank, and then see what they can do. And then I work with the bank and the applicant, find out how can we fill that gap. So total investments out of these four projects are $420,400. That's come into the economy, into our business community as capital infusion in the last four months, five months. Hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred of that has been through E-Community gap loans. Those are lower interest rate loans. If they want a five-year note, it's three percent, and ten years, four percent. So it's very attractive financing. And then if it meets certain criteria that is given to us by Network Kansas, then that applicant may be eligible for a grant. So some of that loan money may be shifted to grant that they don't have to pay back. And so we've awarded $30,000 in grants. So new money outside of the bank investment, which has been significant, new money into our community is about $155,500 capital infusion for local business. So that's been a really good economic boost to us and continues to move in that direction. As a side note, we just had what we call a lender's luncheon yesterday. At most of the banks in the county there and a few investment firms, and we shared with them all the different nuances to this program and all the different loan programs. There's a number of them. We just used one loan program so far. And then we also work with SBDC out of Lawrence, and they provide a lot of free services for business support as far as help them with business plans or review their P&Ls. And, you know, maybe there's an area here where we can help you kind of improve your bottom line. So a lot of great resources. So that was an informative meeting. So now that the banks and the financial folks understand what's out there, so when they deal with a customer, they know that this is another tool that we're bringing to the community to help business development. And then there's a lot of other things, as you folks know very well, a lot of other things that FCDC's been doing these past four years. We've certainly been involved with the MIH and MIH ARPA applications. That's the modern income housing money that's coming from the state every quarter. We've helped win some funding for a project in Wellsville, a big project in Wellsville, and another project in Ottawa, and there'll be more to come. Back in COVID again, I applied for the ability to award $132,000 in COVID relief grants to small businesses. The city did the same thing. So Ottawa had their fund, and then I had a fund for everyone else out in the county. And I was able to provide fourteen COVID grants across the county totaling $132,000. That was, again, those were grants, so it wasn't a loan. It was granted money through the CARES Act to help these businesses get through the, through COVID. So there's another hundred and thirty-two that went into the county economic impact. We certainly have assisted the smaller communities. Ottawa has the staff. They kind of understand when there's things coming up. But when COVID came out, there was a report that went out and said, here's a list of all the communities that are eligible for COVID funding in the state of Kansas. So I looked at that, and outside of Ottawa, we had seven communities that were eligible and had a dollar amount assigned to them for COVID funds. So I reached out to them, and some of them had no idea that I was there. Some of them kind of knew it, but didn't know how to go about it, how we get it. And so I worked with them, and I know Janet was also very key to helping these communities and make sure they got this funding. So it wasn't just me. It's a partnership. But Lane received a little over $34,000. Pomona, a little over $124,000. Princeton, a little over $40,000. Randtul, over $28,000. Richmond, over $69,000. Wellsville, who was kind of on it, received $270,000 and some change, and Williamsburg received $59,000. So a total of, just in those communities, $626,244 of COVID money, COVID grants, went to our communities in the county. Some of that might not have happened without a little nudging. They were certainly informed. But, you know, those, those smaller towns, they're all part-time people, and things get, you know, dropped through the cracks, and it's not because of lack of energy or effort. It's just, that's just how the small communities work. So we're very happy we were able to help bring those, you know, over half a million dollars. Again, it wasn't just me. Janet played a big, big role in that. We also, as you know, do a lot of, spend a lot of time on business retention and expanding industry and business. We've been a player in the expansion at Calmar. We've been a player in the expansion at H C Awards, which are two recent ones. And we certainly have tried to be a big partner in helping with workforce issues. As you know, we've, we've certainly had some focus this year on agriculture and had a good meeting a few weeks ago, or maybe a month ago, thanks to RC and D. And we've had since then, we've scheduled a follow-up Zoom session and start to work on some, how do we position our ag community and our ag business? So you'll hear more about that in the coming months. Certainly a very key player in the Franklin County Career Day with all the school districts. We're happy when I came on board, we didn't have all the school districts participating. And with the help of Dr. Cobb's and his staff, we were able to really get everybody on the same page and have all the schools in the county participate in that every year, and it's just a great event. So I'm looking forward to that again this fall. We help different communities. We've provided quite a bit of support, for example, to Princeton on their efforts for their water, stormwater management. We haven't got the solution yet, but we've got them ready. And I think the example there is, just like David did a great job of getting all the engineering and all the work done, so when money was available for road improvements, we were able to jump on it, or he was. Kind of the same situation now in Princeton. We are ready, the gun's loaded. We're just waiting for the money to come, and then we'll be able to get that to help them. I'm also very engaged at the state level, representing our community. I'm a board member with Kansas Works. John Cohen was that board member, and he retired. Kansas Works approached me to fill that position. So that's, that's a neat organization. We'll, we'll get some more resources available as far as workforce development and workforce programs, so I'm looking forward to that. I'm a board member with KEDA, which is the lead organization in the state of Kansas for economic development, folks throughout the state. And then I'm a board member with Team Kansas. Team Kansas is an organization that comes alongside commerce and recruitment of business and industry. You may recall, I went to Vegas a few weeks ago for a conference. That was, that was part of that relationship where we're out recruiting, and I'll be in Chicago in October for a dinner with some potential industry, thanks to that relationship with Team Kansas. So quite a bit of activity. In your, in your packet there is just some examples of how we've spent some of those funds and how we utilize it. The first one there is Size Up. That is a software program that we partnered with Miami County. And in the example you got, I just drew a map that's similar to Franklin County, but you can do that, and then it'll draw up demographics. But what this is for is specific businesses. You can identify a town or a region or whatever, and it can find where your competitors are. It can find where your suppliers are. It can find where your workforce is. It can also tell you how to market and where to market within your region. Where do people, is there a certain neighborhood or area of the county that you would draw more business from if you targeted your marketing? So it's a pretty cool tool for commercial retail. We also, then, we got the Development Opportunity Profile, and I can come back and spend some time on this with you. But this is a free product we got because of our E-Community membership. But it's a really neat document that kind of walks through, what are the development opportunities for Franklin County? Where are our strengths? Where's, where should we be looking? And so that'll be a good document. We just got that a few weeks ago. And then, as you know, the labor issue's big, and so we've done, we did an updated labor shed in 2022, and that's why you saw that little negative as far as the net outcome for the years. These are not cheap endeavors. But the one we had was about eight years old, so it was pretty outdated. And so these are important, again, one, for information, but two, they help us provide information for RFPs. They help us submit on grants, that type of thing, as far as detail about our labor. And then I mentioned to you, one of the first things we did is a target industry analysis. That's the big thick thing, and that was certainly not an inexpensive process. But that was a pretty thorough review, and they spoke to a number of people about what is, what is the community want, what's a good fit based on location, our demographics, our workforce skillsets, our pay raises, pay ranges. It's pretty intensive, but basically then narrows down, what are your target industries that you should be, that would be a good fit for Proximity Park in our community? Manufacturing was the top one. Obviously, we have a strong workforce for distribution, and so that was, that was highly ranked as well. So all of this is information that I use when I'm looking at marketing and trying to promote the park. In addition to our strong relationship with Commerce and KCADC, they do the bulk of our lead generation. I look at, take this information that's before you, and then I go on the internet and look for industries that kind of match. And then I'll look and see where are they located, and where, try to find out where's their service sector. And if it looked like it would geographically make sense for them to consider something in the Midwest, then their CEO or whoever I can determine online is maybe a decision-maker gets a packet from us about every quarter, reminding them that we're here. So haven't got a hard lead out of that process yet, but I think it's just another way that we can be proactive and not just sit back and wait for others to provide us a lead. So that is a synopsis of what FCDC's been doing, and I'm happy to answer questions or if you have thoughts on things that you didn't hear today that you would like for FCDC to be doing, I would certainly welcome that input as well. But thank you for the time.
Senator, I was doing the difference between what this group says our population is and the Census Bureau.
Yeah, and that's a little bigger than the county, but that's kind of, yeah, it's, I played around with that, because I saw that and thought, that seems about 6,000 too high. I thought maybe my line was a little off, but I didn't find a pocket where I thought there were 6,000 people sitting there, so. Yeah. And I think that's probably more current.
I think so, too.
Yep. That one's, for people that don't know, that's, that one says about 31,000 in Franklin County. And we've been working off a number of about 26.
What do outside statistics, the people looking, what, does any of them tell you what the con with the project?
Our biggest challenge is workforce. Just the number of people that live here and being able to draw workforce. And so our challenge has been with the folks just a little up the highway here, a little closer to a larger pool of people. And so that's been our biggest challenge is, is, I think, we have a fantastic piece of property. We have a fantastic location, with the exception of when they went rail. But as far as interstate and that type of thing, and close to airports, it's a, it's a great location. And so the one, the one project where we were really, really, really. one, the one project where we were really, really, really close, one of the key factors was workforce. The other one was the, the other community kind of just started giving everything away, just to push it over the finish line. So, you know, it just depends how aggressive you want to be on some of that stuff, depending on the market. Some communities around us are giving their land away, you know. That's not my decision to make. We have to think about what's, what's the right thing long-term. But it's, it's a very aggressive market out there right now. You know, the stuff that's going in in Burlington, that was, that, they got everything they could ever want from, from that county. But that county's got a lot more money in the coffers, thanks to the power plant than Franklin County. So we have to be realistic in what we can do and what's reasonable. But workforce is the number one challenge for us.
And I think if you figure it per cap, but a coffee county gave over ten thousand a person, every man, woman, and child, pretty much in upfront incentives.
Yeah, that's crazy. We can't do that. I would never advocate for that.
I won't think I would do it if we could.
Yeah.
I mean, I think I'd rather use that money and be the best thirty-one or twenty-six thousand person county in the state instead of.
Yeah. No, I, I have no disagreement. You know, economic development folks are always pretty aggressive with giveaways, but I'm, I'm not in favor of that. I'm, I'm a taxpayer too. So it has to be rational.
Yeah.
But we have to be flexible, too.
Not a criticism of them, I guess. They're in a different.
No, they're in a different position. Yeah, power to them, they can do it. Yeah, absolutely. No criticism. Yeah. You have to, but we have to be flexible. And, and I think it comes down, at the end of the day, how bad do we want that particular industry? And what's the return long-term, not just in that transaction moment?
That particular county, they got the one, but they probably won't be able to get another one because what they need workforce for that one is going to overtax what their whole base is. So.
Yeah, that's a housing opportunity for us, quite frankly. All of this is, and we're seeing it in Wellsville. You know, Wellsville's got some significant housing developments going in. And that's because of what's going on already, but also what's coming with Panasonic. So you're starting to see the developers. And I've, I've had more and more meetings, you know, like I think I've told you all, in 2019, I'd call a developer up in the city and they didn't even know where Ottawa was. And now they're calling me and kind of saying what's available and what's, what are prices and this and that. So we're, we're on the radar and it's coming. We just have to decide what we want and how badly we want it.
Paul, what was the strangest question you received about proximity park?
Wow, that's a great question, Roy. Well, the one I've never expected, it made perfect sense, but I never expected it, is, is where's the flight path from the airport? Because I hadn't thought about that. But now we've had probably six cases where now I know, okay, I've got the flight cone for you here. Let me send it to you. That was one that threw me initially. You know, it's, I get all kinds of nuances to the tax questions. And Janet, bless her heart, is really good at understanding the question. I don't even know if I understand the question half the time, but the, the way they'll devy up different elements of the tax code, I think, is probably the strangest to me, Roy, is, at the end of the day, I'm kind of thinking, why's that depth of detail matter when you're looking at, you know, a pretty general, here's the overall tax rate? But they, they do get into some crazy little nuances.
We've been talking about housing, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Housing for years, and we've seen a lot of activity. And then now we're starting to hear about some big projects. Do you know how many dwelling units we've netted?
I do not know. That's a great question. I will be able to answer that shortly. I just got the draft. I haven't had a chance because it's one hundred and forty-six pages, but I just got the first draft of our new housing study, which will have that in there. So I'll be happy to report that and share that report with you when we get it finalized. But, so I don't have that in front of me, but I know I've got it on my desk.
Well, thank you so much for the update. That is a lot of information. And especially for the public, I think we, as a commission, kind of keep up to date on what is going on. But it's, it's a lot of good information as far as where the county is.
Well, again, appreciate the support that you give to F C D C. I hope you feel it's a good investment. And I'm always open, like I said, if there's other things or something I'm doing that you don't want me to do, or something I'm not doing that you'd like me to spend more time on, please, please, please feel free to let me know. And I'm happy to respond to that. But truly, on behalf of the board and myself, appreciate the support we get from, from the county. So thank you very, very much to you and all the citizens that support it with their tax dollars.
I'm thinking you shouldn't take vacation because what happens if the right one comes in and you have.
I do check for that when I'm on, but yeah, I'm not going to miss that one.
Oh, I'm gonna, all right.
Thank you.
All right. Our second item of business is to approve a purchase of a three-year enterprise agreement for Microsoft applications from S H I. And Dustin is going to walk us through this. Morning.
Good morning. So this is somewhat of a routine. We do, we have to renew this contract or look at renewing this contract every three years. The current contract expires on Monday. The two significant changes with this one is, one, application that was added last year. It is a minimal piece called Power B I that's being used by the Preservers Office. That's only adding in another four hundred and seventy dollars to the overall. The other major change to this is upping our user count. Last time when we did this in 2020, we changed from a device licensing over to a user licensing. And we weren't quite sure where we needed to be with how many of our staff were going to need these licenses. At the same time, the district court was looking at being mandated to go onto a state solution. So we thought we'd be losing some subscribers as well. So we've kind of settled in a little bit more and found where our needs are and had some additions to that. We've added forty-five additional user licenses to this agreement. The court is staying on ours as well as their state. So I wasn't able to reclaim those. But the increases here, from a per-user perspective, is just under twenty-three dollars per user, per year to have access to these applications. Our total cost per user is now two hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. And the other addition to this is these meeting rooms. In 2020, with the CARES Act funding, we outfitted, I believe it was six meeting rooms. And as of July first, Microsoft told us we can't use a user license to license these rooms anymore. We need a room license to license these rooms. So as of July first, I'm out of compliance with our licensing because I'm still using a user license for these rooms. This contract goes ahead and includes those room licenses in as well. So between our user count being increased by forty-five users and the per-license increase, that amounts for about a little over seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars worth of the increase. And then the room licensing change that Microsoft implemented on July one is another twenty-seven hundred and forty dollars and ninety-two cents. That is the bulk of the changes that we're seeing or the increases that we're seeing on this contract. It is a three-year agreement, which is what we've done in the past as well. Really to make up the differences from where I budgeted to what this agreement is, I'm looking at shifting some of the licenses that we build back, the district court, the health department, and some of these other areas that we build the departments back. They've all been funded out of my software line. I'm looking at taking those and billing those from my items for resale line and reimbursing that like I have. So I am going to probably struggle a little bit on my overall reimbursement gap for the year. But my overall expenses will be okay by breaking the invoice up whenever that comes in between the two.
Tell me again about the new users we've added. Where did those come from?
Uh, some of it is like our custodial staff. I have not licensed those for their office suite. Some of it is going to be our public works staff that is on the iPads and such now. They've now got email addresses associated with them. We have not accounted for them in the past. And, and it's really kind of try and get all of our staff back on board.
There are the increases associated with the countywide software project.
Yes.
Basically.
Okay.
Given the nature of what this is, Dustin, and, and you're among the best we have at trying to negotiate, there's not a lot we can do in terms of this increase.
If we, if we're going to stay on a Microsoft environment, they kind of dictate where we are. They break it up in tiers. And this is the tier of pricing that we fall in. And there, there's really not a whole lot of room to negotiate with them. They basically offer it, here's what it is, and stay with us or don't.
The amount that we're approving today, is that per year or is that for three years?
That is per year.
That is per year?
That is per year.
Okay. So we have to approve that amount every year?
Yes, I come, I come back in front of you each year, whenever the renewal comes due, to make sure that we're okay. But it is a three-year agreement. And the seventy-five thousand, thirty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents is per year.
Would it change if you added or subtracted or?
So each year, they go through a process called a true-up. And if we were to, say, add twenty-five positions or something like that, I would have to do a true-up to increase our user count by twenty-five. The, the part that I really tried to fight, and it was easier with our, whenever we were device licenses, because I wasn't adding computers each year. One would go out, one would come in. But the true-ups are back to your original start of the agreement. So if in year two, we do a true-up and add twenty-five users, I'm not just paying for year two and forward to year three. I have to go back and also pay year one for that increase.
Oh, geez.
So I really tried to avoid any true-ups. That's part of the reason why last year we didn't add any users to include public works, because I didn't want to go back and pay for two years that we weren't using it.
Cool. Any other questions? All right, to move forward with this, affirmative would be, I make a motion to approve the quote from S H I for the renewal of the Microsoft enterprise agreement in the amount of seventy-five thousand and thirty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents.
We're seeing the proof.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Sheriff Dickinson? Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dustin.
All right, so then we'll move on to Stefan for us.
Yeah, thanks, Ian. I don't know that I have anything I need to share today.
Okay. Are we, I was just thinking of United Way. Are we going to move forward with anything or at least discuss that? Or I, I don't know where, what, where we want to go with that.
Yeah. If you've had time to review that, we can, or we can just resolve to do it next week and.
All right, let's just do that.
Okay.
I think we've heard from Paul, right? Okay. Sheriff?
Yes.
Last week, I told you that West Franklin School District had reached out about that and had approved, had an S R O. Did not know where we would be on that. And we've done some work on that. I have sent them a proposed contract as well. We believe we have found a way to get that position staffed, beginning at the starting of the school year as well. And so once we get all that worked out, I will be bringing that contract before the board for your approval on that, to, to enter into the agreement for the S R O at West Franklin. Also, I will be bringing for the renewal, contract for renewal for Central Heights here real soon as well, as soon as I get the final word back from them. So, and that's kind of where we are on that. And we made it through fair, okay. And, and we're just, we've, we've got a week off and then, and then we go down to, then we go down to Laine. So anyway, that's all I have unless you guys have questions for me.
It's a nice, cool weather and.
Yes. I'm glad it wasn't this week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dustin, we're done with you? All right. Janet? I don't have anything. All right. Dunn?
Yeah, the other day, I and David Lee attended the Lake Region's Hall of Fame Authority. Went over a lot of things that we're getting ready for our five-year report to the state of Kansas. And one of the requirements is that each county has to hold a hearing on it. And that'll become before us, be a while. But anyhow, it heads up, it'll become, and it probably just gives us an opportunity to look it over and ask the coordinator face to face. And then let her ask us, you know, if, if we see anything wrong, if we just see added or changes. That took up a lot of our conversation. And then we did get a report on, she had helped several entities apply for a waste tire grant, which it's not just collecting waste tires. It's a program that communities can apply for the waste tire grant. For instance, there was fifty-five of them applied for in the state. Eight of them were supplied for in the Lake Region, six county area. Six of them was approved. One was Central Heights, for tables and benches made out of recycling tire, for one thousand seven seventy-three. City of Overbrook, the same thing, only two thousand one seventy-six. Roseburg, eight thousand seven hundred ninety-two. City of Ottawa, eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-four. City of Osage, actually for playground, the, the chopped up recycling for thirty-one thousand three hundred and six dollars. And Cemetery, Ozark Colony Cemetery District in Addison County, three thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. And we got two of them, applied that didn't get them. But the main reason is we had got them in the past. So they kind of got over that this time around, but they'll come back around again. And possibly, I don't, just like Wellsville, I don't remember exactly what it was. It was last year for their playground, got like seventeen thousand dollars to resurface their playground. So she is doing a good job on helping these entities apply for these grants and get these grants. So I have to come in there on that. Pretty well, most of our, we, the more the main problem is, we're still looking at the candidates to join us in the membership for it. It seemed like five or six years ago, they were coming down. Now we're having to go to them. Because we're trying to make this down and keep our person trying to make it a full time. You know, the only way we can do that, and we're not going to go the damn way for mine, we're not going to the county and increasing them to make it happen. We don't stretch as far as we can, you know, money has. And a couple of the counties made to join to make it closer to the forty. We've done two, like twenty-nine. And we did start to do it a few months ago, from twenty-five to twenty-nine. And that's what we decided. We wasn't going to do it. We could pick one or two counties. We're talking to company. And this time it came across, so that's all I, no, I didn't know. We may do some joining, but the other companies in the last few days, they saw it coming down. This is a fifty year, twenty-two counties, but it's been, it's five counties that answered too. Fifty years, I think, we left that slot. We're going to have to pick one or the other. But what it was, I looked at a plan, it ain't been a, it was ten years ago. I looked at it, it was actually fifty years. It might have been before the, the seven year.
I had a meeting. I need to get you down the hall. So if you take very long, I'm probably going to walk out, but don't take it personally.
No. All I have is I went to the Chamber Coffee last Friday for Southgate Living Apartments, which is the reconverted motel over that has, I think, forty-four units? I can't remember anyway. Some of them are just studios, some of them are two-bedroom. And they've done a nice job. It'll be interesting to see if they can fill them at the prices that they're looking for. But we need housing, so housing that's available. And they're taking applications now. It's called Southgate Living Apartments, if anybody's interested. I have nothing else. So we have nothing to come before the Commission. All right.